I call the regular meeting of council Monday, January 13th to order at 7:05. Looking for approval of the agenda. Oh, I wanted to start off by saying that councillor Sullivan is not with us this evening. She has a health issue that she's staying home to attend to, so. Chair sends her regret. Looking for approval of the agenda?
So move, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Public participation? This is a time, folks, for any members of our public that have anything to comment on in regards to what they're seeing out and about in Callwood, please step forward and make that known. I know we've got a large contingency of Pay It Forward folks here. Anybody else looking for an opportunity for public presentation? And seeing none, we'll move forward. We do have a presentation to begin with from the Vancouver Island Green Business Certification Program. So Lee, if you want to come forward, the mic is there, and that will address our community. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Yeah, so I'm the program manager for the Vancouver Island Green Business Certification Program, and the city of Callwood City Hall was a pilot participant in our green business certification program. And as a part of that, we came by the city hall office and went through a kind of comprehensive checklist. And we're proud to present the city of Callwood and city hall with the green certification, which is the highest level of certification for operations. And it's really just acknowledging that city hall is taking progressive action to, you know, be an environmental steward and also act in socially responsible ways. So I just wanted to congratulate you guys. And I've got a certificate here that you guys can kind of display at will, and then also this kind of, this green badge that we'll be putting up, or you guys can put up at your, at your door front, just so that everyone coming in can kind of recognize that. And I think as a part of the pilot as well, we're just really happy to have city hall participating to kind of get a little bit more insight into what other local governments can be doing to kind of further their actions to be environmental stewards. So I just wanted to thank you guys, and I'll pass this along for you guys.
Okay, thanks. I will have to say that it's been quite an undertaking. This is the first award in the program, as I understand it, so it's something to be proud of. We have staff members, everybody in the whole city hall is, is very committed to what's going on. So we continue to see good things happening, and we will be engaging our fire departments and public works to get them on the green certification program as well. So look forward to more. Thank you. Now, I'm looking forward to the Pay It Forward presentation. We have two with three recipients this evening. And if you will bear with me, just to let you know, that the Pay It Forward program was designed to acknowledge and encourage kinds of acts of kindness and generosity in our community. We have three recipients with us tonight. Kalen, Nikki, and Donna need no encouragement. Their generous actions have inspired each of us to act on our instinct to help, no matter what age we are or how wealthy we are. Kalen Abrahamson is just seven years old, but the Callwood youngster has been determined in raising funds to help sick kids at Children's Hospital. Kalen organized a poinsettia sale this year and hoped that she might earn about a hundred dollars that she could donate. Fact of the matter was, she came up with $350, and that was doubled by a generous purchaser who gave her a check for 350 to double her earnings. She's now recruited her younger brother Kai, who's also here with her. And she's looking for more of those opportunities to do good things in the community. So I would like to call Kalen forward for her presentation. So they have started, what was it, 2008, I understand, to stuff backpacks with warm clothes, personal hygiene items, food, and treat, and distribute it amongst the homeless. So I would like to call forward both Nikki and Donna. It's through the actions of folks like you guys that strengthen our community. So I really do want to say thank you very much. Moving on to item number five, Mayor's Message. I really have just a couple of announcements to actually make. There's a, and they're all, or two of them are available on our website if anybody doesn't get the info on them. So tomorrow evening, there is a town hall in regards to sewage treatment, probably everybody's favorite subject. It's being hosted by Andrew Weaver, the MLA for the Oak Bay area. But nonetheless, this is something that affects us all. So I, I encourage you to check out the timeframe, and if you're at all possible to come to partake in that, I think you'll get some fairly good information on that one. The other one is Operation Child Find is opening up a office here in BC, more precisely at Jenner Chev Olds on Old Arden Highway, Suk Road. That will be taking place on Wednesday at 10:00 a.m., and they welcome everybody. That's an opportunity for parents to fingerprint your children and register them in a national registry. It, and so, you know, we would never want to see members of our community lost there like we have seen with Michael Dunahy and a number of others. So it's an important opportunity for us to engage in. So I'm hoping we have a strong turnout on that one as well. What's that? And it's a free registration. The other one that I have is just an acknowledgement. Royal Roads University continues to engage with a number of cultures worldwide. And we most recently had an entourage of Chinese students who were here. Arts and culture is their studies. And they were doing a tour through the West Shore and were in our community. And councillor Lukens and I were greatly honored to be there and presented, and she has, a hand-stitched, folks, that's not a painting, it's embroidery stitching on a panel that was presented to the city of Callwood. So we will be finding a, a place that we can hang that. But if you, anybody who's into handwork, to take a look at that is absolutely awe-inspiring. So that was presented to the city, and we welcome its addition on. The students were here for a two-week stay. They spent a week in, on the mainland, and then they were here for a week in, in the Callwood area associated with Royal Roads. So they were quite impressed by all that we have to offer. And I'm sure they'll be back to visit at some other time. So, thanks councillor. And then, and that is it on my list. Moving forward then to item number six, 6.1 Adoption of the Regular Meeting of Council December 16th.
Move adoption. Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Looking to receive minutes for the Special Committee of the Hole November 26th, and Special Committee of the Hole December 18th, both on budget.
Move receipt, your worship.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Moving in then, 7.1.1. I'm just going to stop for a moment. For those folks in the audience, if you, I know you want to just, you're dying to stay here and hear all about us, and you're welcome to, but if you do want to sneak away, maybe we'll give you the opportunity to do that. I know there's kids that have to get jammies on.
No, this is really fun and exciting. Stop, stop!
Yeah, it's okay, Lyle. And Lyle, you can get your jammies on, too. Thanks. Thanks, folks. Oh, look at that. Hi, Ian.
Yeah.
Sitting back in the shadows.
Snuck in.
We're gonna put spotlights back there.
Remote-controlled.
Well, you can move up now if you like. All right. Were you in when we did public participation? Okay. Just making sure you had your opportunity. Moving on then, 7.1.1, Discussion, councillor Rob Martin, in regards to the 2014 Greater Victoria Public Library Budget, Request for Early Approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, the speaks for itself. There's, is, the Greater Victoria Library Association's looking for early approval of the budget. Basically, right now, we're proposing an operating budget that will have an increase of 3.01% for 2014, excuse me. Basically, will be a 3.55 municipal contribution for the, for the city of Callwood. Over the past five years, the Greater Victoria Library has a circulation per capita that has increased by over 31%. And circulation capita of materials is second highest in all of Canada. We're incredibly stretched with the demands. And unfortunately, one of the big issues of when we don't increase, and to be honest, a lot of this increase of 3.55 is just maintaining what we have presently, and it doesn't allow us to actually increase our collections as well as we should. And so, it's actually, from my standpoint, it's a little disappointing that the budget is this low, but some of the, well, Greater Victoria, the Victoria itself mandated that they would not approve a budget higher than what this is. And so hence the reason we're, we're at that level. I think there needs to be a realization that especially here in the West Shore, we're going to start having higher demands as our population increases, and that we really do need to look at perhaps funding in the future above this 3.55% because we're going to need to, to build in a collection. But saying all that, I would just move that the Callwood City Council, I don't have an exact, oh, here it is, that authorize the mayor and CO to sign the, nope, I don't really have a motion, but just for early approval of the Greater Victoria Library budget.
Just suggest approve as presented.
Thank you. So appreciated.
A seconder, please?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? I would just say that I did participate in the summer reading program with the children here, which is noted with a 5.23 increase from the year previous. It was very well-attended, and the kids were very excited. And what an opportunity for them to maintain their reading skills throughout the summer when so often there's a slide back in school. So it's a good program, for sure. Call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item number 7.1.2, City Engineer Regarding Solar Callwood and NRCAN Audit Update. Mr. Baxter, are you taking that, or councillor Cullington?
I can take this.
Thank you, sir.
So I've included there on the first page and over on the second page, the previous resolution by council, which included the condition that the currently scheduled federal government audit is successfully completed and unencumbered before the contract amendment is signed by council and NRCAN. And you see, there's an attachment, first attachment to the report is from the Office of Energy Research and Development, suggesting that Callwood not wait until the audit is 100% complete because they have no concerns about it, and they're satisfied with the way it's gone so far. I should clarify that in my report, I said there were minor outstanding items. It depends how you describe minor. The biggest issue is that one of our large quasi-governmental partners, BC Hydro, to be exact, does not understand why they should provide information to NRCAN. And they are part of our, our in-kind contributions. And so we have two essentially government bodies that feel, you know, they have their own rules and are not necessarily willing to live by the others' rules. So that's really the issue that's left. And NRCAN would like to move on, and it depends whether council is satisfied and wants to move on as well. So another issue that you should be aware of is the fact that NRCAN asked to reduce the targets compared to what was in the council's motion. But a reduction in target actually makes it more certain that we will achieve those targets. And so, the recommendation is to authorize the mayor and CAO to sign the Department of Natural Resources Clean Energy Fund, Smaller Scale Demonstration Amendment Number Two, to the repayable contribution agreement between Her Majesty and the Rite of Canada and the city of Callwood. And that document is attached, without waiting for the completion of the federal audit.
That's fine. And just before we get there, I do believe what we should be doing just to keep things clean is, in our previous motion that we admit that is itemized in our report here, the last item that indicated the currently scheduled federal government audit is successfully completed and then encumbered before the contract amendment is signed by council and NRCAN. If we rescind that section and replace it with the recommendation that has been suggested by Mr. Baxter. So that's what I'm kind of looking for from council, please.
I'm just wondering, can we rescind just a portion of a motion?
Yes, we can. Yeah, as long as, one thing that's missing here is the meeting date of the, of the, of the motion. We can find that. But as long as we quote the motion that's being rescinded, which is in its entirety here, and then endorse the motion stated by the municipal engineer.
So I would move that we rescind the last bullet of the motion as written in the report, and move the recommendation.
Second.
Comments, questions, discussion? Councillor Lukens?
Thank you, your worship. I fully support the solar Callwood program, and I've stated that a number of times. And I, I have read the letter with respect to moving forward without the audit being completed from John Gorup. I guess, we have policy in the city with respect to doing these types of things. And I'm just wondering if this contradicts that in any way. I just want to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as far as signing contracts when audits and stuff aren't completed.
Through the chair to councillor Lukens. No, we don't have a policy on that, per se. I think it's just a matter of that we've got confirmation from NRCAN that they say there's nothing wrong with the audit, although we don't have the final signed-off audit yet. But they're suggesting that they have no qualms with what they see, and that they would like to move this program to a more regional level, and they encourage us to do so.
So I have a second question, if I may. What happens? That they find something before they complete the audit, then what? If that was to happen?
If I could speak to that, they're not, the audit is not continuing to investigate anything. They're simply waiting for a letter of confirmation from BC Hydro and, and one of the very, very small contractors.
Thank you.
I guess the points within that letter, just to be sure that everybody is aware, including our audience, within that, the document from John Gorup of NRCAN, "Callwood has been fully cooperative with the auditors, and we have not placed any conditions on the signing of the amendment. In fact, the amendment was approved by our Grants and Contributions Review Committee in late November, stressing that the sooner it was signed, the sooner Callwood could proceed with the expanded regional rollout of the solar hot-water heating component of the program." Further to that, given that there may still be some minor outstanding items to be dealt with, and that they have not relayed any substantive concern to us, I would encourage the city of, the city, city of Callwood to go ahead and sign the amendment as soon as possible. That's directly from NRCAN. Any other questions, comments? Councillor Martin?
I have several questions, actually. Can I, can I just clarify, how many people to the state have, have utilized solar Callwood?
Well...
Roughly. It doesn't have to be exact.
It's about a thousand.
About a thousand, thank you. And, and how much is it costing us per household? Roughly $5 a year, correct?
For the number that have taken some sort of action?
No, no, that's, it's costing the taxpayers. At some point, solar Callwood was going to cost us like $37,500 or something around the entire program. So, which worked out to like $5 a household per year.
It's always coming under budget.
So how much is it costing us? It's just roughly. Like, is it $5? Is it less?
It'll be four, two...
The original, the original calculation was that it was something like $5 for the total of the program. It's, I don't have the number. I know it's going to be considerably less. We can certainly ask Godia and Jen to, to bring that.
I'm just, so roughly $250?
No, I, I don't think it's that big a reduction. It'll, it'll be in the range of $3 to $4.
$3 to $4, okay, thank you.
And not annually, just a one...
$3 to $4 total, thank you. And can you also tell me, why, why is it that, that we need to approve this? I'm trying to understand the reason we need to approve this before the final audit is complete. Like, why, why can we not wait until the final audit is complete?
The, the, if you remember when we originally did this, we said we wanted the, the audit complete in order to, to do the amendment. And there were really two things that the amendment was doing. One was pushing the completion date out to March 2015, as opposed to March 2014, but more significantly, allowing us to make those grants for solar hot water available right throughout the region. So CRD has been waiting on us to be able to do this. And we've sort of consistently been giving the message, no, we have to complete the audit before we can, we can do this, because that's the council motion. I ended up in conversation with John Gorup, actually over something else, and he said, by the way, what's happening with the, the amendment? You know, why haven't you guys signed it? And I said, well, you know, we're waiting for completion of the audit, and, and that's where this piece came forward. And that he said, no, 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 we want you to be approving this and rolling it out so that you can get this program region-wide and underway.
So, sorry, through the chair, just to clarify then. So it was a, it was a council motion that said that we wanted to have the audit complete?
Yes.
So we're asking that we go pa, we go against our motion previous?
Rescind it.
Yeah, okay, got it.
And the comments, in the memo from John at NRCAN was, is difficult to predict how we will see the preliminary, when we will see the preliminary report from the auditors. The audit firm retained by NRCAN was closed for two weeks over the Christmas break, and we, we, they, NRCAN, have not indicated to them any priority in completing the, the audit.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to add that the audit is really NRCAN's internal process as well. It's, it's about them dotting their t's and crossing their i's, rather than our own. Our own solar Callwood program is still subject to our own internal controls.
Any further comments, questions, discussion? Call the question then. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Motion carries? Moving forward, please, item 7.2, Parks, Recreation and Culture, Discussion, 7.2.1, with councillor Martin, in regards to West Shore Parks and Rec, Request for Early Approval.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Basically, the owners' agreement requires that a budget be approved by January 28th. Hence the reason it's coming before this table this evening for early approval. Basically, really quickly, some of the highlights of the West Shore Park and Rec budget. The municipal requisitions have actually been reduced from 50% last year to 48.22 of our budget, excluding major repairs and maintenance. So basically, what that's saying is, the other 52% is being picked up by fees, people paying into, you know, to go in for a swim or whatever. 2014, we have a decrease in the requisition of 1.71%, which basically represents an $83,000 decrease in the, from the 2013 requisition for the city of Callwood. Revenues have been continually going, especially in the pool, the fitness weight rooms, and the sports. Payroll has increased by 1.73%. Also, please keep in mind that 2% increase for QP staff were included in that. So that's actually, we actually have a reduction in staff growth when you, when you calculate in the 2% inflation we had, or excuse me, the 2% growth that QP had negotiated. And we continue to manage and review all costs and make reductions wherever possible. So I will look to, or I'll make a motion that we have an early approval for the West Shore Park and Rec budget.
Second.
Comments, questions, members of council? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Item 7.3, Budget Considerations Refered from Committee of the Hole. Sewage Treatment Taxation for 2014. Is that one coming from you, councillor Martin?
Oh, is it? Oh, brother.
In that it's budget and finance?
Uh, sorry.
Or engineer, Ms. Baxter, do you want to?
I wasn't planning on speaking to this one. Would you like to, or do you want me to, or?
I don't think there's five places to speak to.
All right, I will, I'll speak to it.
There are, there are total...
Director Finance will speak to it. Thank you.
Nobody wants to take this one on. Thank you, your worship. We're just bringing forward the recommendation from committee hole on the proposed property tax, or proposed collection of taxes for the sewer utility. At the last committee of the whole meeting on January 7th, committee of the whole recommended to council option one, which is that sewer fees be collected, as they were in 2013, through a sewer user fee for properties on sewer, and a property value tax on the balance shared by all Callwood properties. In the committee of the whole budget that we'll return to later, I thought we would see it by now, but you will see the budget reflected on option one.
Okay, so in our report, council, we have, in fact, a number of motions. The first one, if you recall from that conversation of committee of the whole, there was a rescinding of the motion, in that it was reflected for 2013 dates. So... So if you are looking online, or, it's the motion, motion number three on page 17 of the minutes be rescinded, that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of, for the use of users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system and for which the city must remit payment taxes in 2014 or later be charged as a parcel tax on the entire city calculated on development potential in the same way as currently lists used in the local area service, is the new motion that we need.
Madam Mayor, that's the motion that's being rescinded?
That was the rescinded one.
And I would so move that we rescind that motion from council March 11th, 2013?
Second.
And the reason, just for clarification, for the rescinding of that motion is that we are unable to charge a parcel tax at this time?
Any other comments, questions? Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Then the next one will be Committee of the Whole recommend to council, two parts to this one, that the existing users of the municipal sewer systems be charged for both the capital cost and the maintenance cost of the capacity in which they will use in any sewer, sewage treatment system used by the city as a fee calculated on the same basis as sewer user fees. And two, that the capital cost of any capacity purchased or otherwise paid for by the city in any sewage treatment system for the use of users yet to be connected to the municipal sewer system and for which the CRD requisition must be remitted in 2014 be charged as an assessed value tax on the entire city.
Move. Second.
Comments, questions? Seeing none?
Oh, no.
Yes.
Once again, I will not be supporting this. I truly believe, as I stated during Committee of the Whole, that sewer is a regional issue and one that all of us should pay for. I do believe we need to work towards that. I do understand the other side of the equation. My concern is, is that, and I think Finance can probably speak to this, with respect to what it's going to end up costing users that are on sewer by the time 2018 rolls around, which is about $1,900 per household plus a parcel tax plus their municipal tax. And I don't know if we've looked that far out or not, but I also talked to Pat Van Buskirk today and asked her about a referendum that was held back in 1992 with respect to sewers and whether or not people wanted to go on sewers. And I understand that they did choose not to go on sewers, and then there is a second question in that with respect to understanding, if they did support sewers, how would they want it to be treated? And coincidentally, I have it here that it was moved by Alderman Bergbush, and Alderman Murdock seconded, that an informal meeting be held between staff and council to discuss the goals and objectives with regard to onsite, which is septic sewage disposal in Callwood, both in existing developments and for possible future developments, and future direction for the provision of limited sanitary sewer areas in Callwood. I just want to make sure that we're all going down this road with our eyes wide open, that this is not a political or a personal decision, that it's the right decision for our community. And I really think we need to take a long look, not at a political position, because silly season is coming up, but a longer vision of what this is really going to cost. Those that are on sewer, sometimes by choice and sometimes by not, but those that are on sewer and what it's going to cost in the long run if we do not share this as a regional tax, which I believe it should be.
Councilor Martin?
Thank you. I reiterate exactly what Councilor Lukens has said. I've struggled with this over the last five days because I've been trying to think about how to present this properly and for, hopefully that this council will appreciate that, that I have attempted to try and be as thoughtful as possible. This is a bad decision that was made a long time ago, previous councils, and that, in my opinion, we, we are continuing to perpetuate a bad decision. And the, the issues basically come down to this. One, from a regional standpoint, as Councilor Lukens has said, there are several examples I can look up and find that benefits few in this community, and yet we choose to charge everybody for it. For example, dams. Dams benefit a very small proportion of this community, and yet we ask everyone in the community to, to pay for and maintain those dams. I've mentioned towers, I've mentioned schools, and just recently I asked about solar callwood. We have about 1,000 people who benefited from solar callwood, and we asked every individual, every household to pay $3 to $4 to support that. Now, what's the difference between solar callwood and sewers? The difference, I think, is the dollar amount. I don't think it's the premise that it's not a community. I think what it is, is that councils, people at this table have thought this is a significant dollar amount, and it's not fair that we, we share it among all. My concern is that, for example, and if we're using, again, environmental sound, environmental reasons, the Lagoon LSA was encouraged to be developed by ELSI because not that septic fields were failing in the lagoon area, but fields were seeping into the lagoon and that, that it was polluting the Esquimote Lagoon, and that it was encouraged by all residents down there that they should join a sewer so that that didn't leak into the lagoon, and that the lagoon benefits all of Callwood. I personally didn't believe it, and, and so I didn't join for two years. However, even though I didn't join, I had to pay both my sewer fee and my septic fee, even though I wasn't hooked into sewers. And again, I don't understand the difference between, I didn't have access to sewers, but previous councils thought that I should still have to pay for it. And obviously, I went to court to deal with that issue. The other thing that I think that we need to look long-term about, and Councilor Lukens has stated this as well, as you begin to look farther down the road, 2018, we are going to be in a position where property tax is going to be less than sewer tax in, for some, for people who are hooked into sewers, which means we're, we're in a position from a development standpoint of, why would a developer ever want to develop in Callwood? Because if you have to buy a new house, and you're going to pay $5,000 in property tax, and you can live in a home that is on septic, that you pay half of that in tax, why would you ever do, choose that? So what you're going to end up doing is you're going to end up having developers develop low-valued homes, because the only way people will purchase those homes that have a higher tax burden is if they have to pay less for those homes. So what happens is this council is artificially driving down prices on sewer homes and artificially raising prices on septic field homes. It's a long-term issue that is going to create a long-term financial disaster for this, for this council, and if we do not address this at some point, we're putting ourselves at peril. This council won't have to deal with it. The council in 2016, 2017, 2018 will need to deal with this. And it's, it's an issue that I think we can't run away from. And I know it's not a popular one either, but it's a reality. I'm done. Thank you.
Councilor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I, I appreciate the opinions of my, my colleagues, and, and really, it's going to be a crapshoot if we get any support either, depending on either decision we, we decide to make. But the fact of the matter is, the, the greater majority made that decision for us during the survey that said, this is the way we want to go. We're kind of reiterating that, that opinion that's out there. And, and just to, to argue some of the points that were made, as someone that's on a septic field, I have the option to get on the bus, I have the option to cross the bridge, I have the option to partake in the dam at Lookout Lake that I pay for through tax dollars, but I don't have the option to hook up for sewers. And I think that, that's the issue right now. And I think if I did have the option to hook up the sewers, if it was close, then I would have no issue with paying my fair share of the capacity. But the fact of the matter is, every time I get my septic tank pumped, I'm paying the sewage treatment costs. And so, you know, if, if there was some commitment by the city to alleviate those costs, then I'd be perhaps more amenable to, to chipping in. But in essence, I would be paying twice if the costs were spread across the whole city, and then when my tank gets pumped. So, you know, I guess on the, on the positive side, that this may spur us to, to move in the direction of working with a third party to sewer more of the city, because that's really in our best interest is to extend the sewers, and then when I'm paying for, or when I, there's a chance of getting the service in a reasonable timeframe, then that's when we start paying no problem. But, you know, I, I don't think we have much of a, of a choice, at least in the short term, with, with the direction we go. And it's not, it's not a comfortable one, and this cost is not something that the city has taken voluntarily either. Yet, we're the ones that are getting screwed with the perception of sticking it to, to our residents, so that's the real unfortunate part. Thank you.
Councilor Day?
Thanks. And it's certainly unfortunate that such a high-cost system has been taken on by the Capital Regional District as a way to deal with sewage. I certainly think that people made a very informed decision in Callwood, that the people who were on onsite sewage treatment plants, septic tanks, wanted to retain them because they were considered to be the least expensive option. And so, you know, in my neighborhood, it's a very cost-effective option. And, and that's an important thing for us to remember, that there's a large majority of people in Callwood who are very well-serviced by their in-ground septic treatment plants and that don't have any problems, that have, and, and they're fortunate because they have sufficient size and sufficient quality of soils in that particular area that's been developed that they're able to do that. There were other areas of Callwood that, that wanted to develop, and in order to do that, they needed a sewage treatment system that was not in-ground. And so, you know, the, the promise that has been made to the people of Callwood for 25 years now is that the people who put that septic system in place would pay for that service. So I, I understand the concerns with regard to costs, and for sure, I would want to do everything I could to help those people in Callwood who must be on a septic treatment system and who need to bring those costs down as much as possible. And for that reason, you know, I've supported expansion of those systems to help gather more people to pay for those systems. But schools, for example, we all pay into schools, whether we have kids now or ever, because that's a basic tenet of democracy. Having an informed public is to our benefit, whether those are our children in that school or not. In regards to low-cost homes, Callwood still has a higher average cost of home because we have lovely neighborhoods, and it's been my observation that most of the new homes that have come onboard in Callwood have not been of the low-cost variety. There's many beautiful, beautiful homes that have been built since I've been on council. And so I, I would agree with Councilor Logan that it really comes down to whether or not you can access those amenities. And sewage treatment is something that I, I cannot and do not access anywhere else. I can go to the park, I can go to the swimming pool, I can go to the arena, and we are following exactly the recommendation from the public as best we can within the situation that we find ourselves in. So I support the motion.
Councilor Cullington?
Thank you. How could I not, how could I not weigh in on my favorite topic? My other favorite topic. I absolutely share the concerns out there around, if we stay as we currently are within the CRD system, our costs are bad this year, they are going to get worse and worse and worse, and it is truly scary, and I completely agree with all of the comments that are made around that. That's why, for me, the number one thing we have to do is to work with the CRD to do an amendment to the Liquid Waste Management Plan where Callwood does its piece differently. Callwood is different than the other municipalities who are participating in this. One of the big challenges that we have, and we recognized when we did that public survey, is that we're not only paying for capacity that we need and use right now, we have a big chunk in there which is for future capacity, and that was always the issue. So the way that the public came back to us through that survey and consultation process is they said, and this is what we're trying to follow as closely as we can within the bounds of what we're allowed to do, what we said is, there's a piece of the cost that relates to what our current sewer users need. They need to pay for all of that. That's fair and reasonable. I don't think anybody argues with that. Then what we do is take that other piece of the puzzle, which is what we're paying for future capacity, and that's the piece that gets spread right across the city. So actually, in support of Councilors Lukens and Martin, actually what we are doing is recognizing that that future capacity is a citywide benefit because it allows us to do the, the future development that we want to do. Having said that, what I personally believe is that we need to move to a Callwood system which says, we build the capacity that we need now, plus a little bit of extra, not lots and lots of extra, and that, and the sewer users will pay for that. And then as we need that additional capacity, for example, as Royal Bay builds out, we build the additional capacity. So we're not all of us paying for additional capacity that we don't need right now. So for me, it's important that this motion only takes us into 2014. We have to pay that bill somehow. I think the way I described it the other night was, this is the least unfair of the options. I'm not thrilled at any of them, but this seems like the least unfair, and absolutely we have to do what we need to do to get ourselves into a different equation. So we are not facing 2015 and having this argument around the table again because it, it just gets scarier. So I will be supporting the motions tonight. Thank you.
Many good comments made tonight. I'll just go to say that, you know, I understand the regional context that, that has been brought up, but it's not, this particular cost item, if you will, is not necessarily regional. It only encompasses seven of the 13 municipalities. If it was to be considered a regional, pardon me, regional issue, and we do equalize that, that payment across the board, then septic users have to be, you know, considered in that, because the way it stands now, if Councilor Day's system fails, she's on the hook for that cost to repair and bring it up to, to service at her own expense. If a sewer pipe fails, the city comes to your rescue. If it's on your city lines, it is.
Yeah, but who's paying for that city?
Well, all of us would be in the regional thing. So...
I have a sort of interplay.
In any case, it's not a debating part of things or whatever, and that's fine, Councilor Martin. So, you know, if we were going to truly make it regional, then they have to take into consideration, there has to be some, some look at what the risk management is from that. The last time I pumped mine, which was two years ago, it was close to $800 to have it inspected, pumped and inspected, and certified by the CRD standards that it was good to go. So, you know, it's costing me on top of what I'm already paying, and I'm in one of those zones that will probably, in the life of the plant, not see a sewer pipe in, in our area. So those costs going forward are lost. I don't recover them. If I put a renovation in my kitchen, I recover that in, in the sale of my home, or potentially can recover it in the sale of my home. If I upscale my landscaping, again, it's reflected in, in the sale of my home. I pay into a capital, and I, and we haven't even seen the operational costs yet come out of this plant, which Councilor Cullington and I just keep shaking our heads at, at that other table downtown. Yeah, like, we do need to do things differently, and I really hope that this...
Yeah, like, we do need to do things differently, and I really hope that this council will band together and put some pressure through an amendment that could see us revisiting this for 2015 in a much better situation, where, where it's more fair, and we actually have a plan for our residents in here, so. Anything else from anybody?
Sorry.
Sure? As long as you're not counting.
And I'm not going to repeat anything, because I, and I won't, I won't try not to argue. Just a, just a couple other points that I forgot to mention, was I also think that this council needs to understand, from a financial standpoint, again, that there's going to be ramifications with lawsuits with DND, and I also believe with Westshore Park and Rec, because of the significant costs that are increasing. What happens with that, that means that every Callwood resident is picking up that cost, because it's, it's a lawsuit. And then, what happens is, for example, let's say DND chooses and says, you know what, we, our Belmont Parks lands are now depressed, because we don't think they're as valuable as people that are on septic, we're not going to pay as high a pilt, because the lands are, have a depressed value. So instead of paying 2.8 million, we're going to pay 2.1 million. Who picks up the other 700,000? It means everybody in Callwood picks it up, too. So what happens is, we can't, we can't be naive to think that we're just passing these costs just on to, to sewer residents, that if we do not address this properly, it costs all of us anyways. And, and that's what I'm concerned about, is that it ends up being a hidden cost, because we're just not collecting as much in pilt, and, and, you know, other municipalities are now suing us, because they're, they're saying, we can't be paying $200,000 at Westshore Park and Rec for sewers, when it would have cost us $14,000 in Langford, if we were hooked into Langford. I mean, other municipalities are looking at us and shaking their heads as well. So I, I just want us to go with our eyes wide open. The interesting comment, though, too, that I would just like to finish with, is, I appreciate everybody and everybody's thoughts, and I know it's not an easy concept, but I challenged this council to tell me the difference between what this is and what solar Callwood is, and no one addressed that. We're, everybody is paying for solar Callwood. Everybody believes in, everybody is so proud that this, this city is an environmental and green city. And, and sewers are part of that, I'm sorry, they are. That's part of having a healthy community. It's making sure that we're not polluting the grounds, and that we're taking care of this. And, and I don't see the difference. I see a financial difference, but I don't see a philosophical difference. And, and I think that there's, I think you need to challenge yourselves on that, too, because if there is a philosophical difference, then I would love to know, because I don't get it. Thank you.
Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries? There is another recommendation within this report, and we will not be addressing it this evening, because it has to do with the five-year financial plan, and so we need still some time, I understand, on that one, till we get the rest of the budget through. So that one will be put off to a later date, just so everybody is aware why we're not dealing with it at the moment. Which then brings us, please, to section number eight, bylaws. Bylaw number 1481, final reading, Callwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999, 2008, amendment number 5, 43274 Anchorage Avenue. Move final?
Set.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Item 8.3, bylaw number 1528, for, or pardon me, bylaw, 8.2, bylaw number 1482. Final reading on Callwood Land Use Bylaw, number 151, amendment number 126, R5 zoning amendment 3274 Anchorage Avenue. Move final?
Second.
Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. 8.3, bylaw number 1528, first, second, and third readings, Callwood Development Cost Charge Bylaw for Major Roads, 1998, bylaw number 441, amendment number 1, bylaw number 1528. Mr. Holdenby, are you doing the introduction on this one? Or information on this one?
I can do that. This comes out of a report to, I think it was the council recently. The, this puts two changes into the building bylaw. One allows developers to create, claim a credit when they already have a building on-site, and they're replacing that building with a new building. They claim a credit for the DCCs that are assumed to have been paid, or proven to have been paid on the, on the original building. And I say assumed, because if the building existed before DCCs existed, then it's, it's an assumption that those costs were paid for by taxes in those days. And the second change is to even the playing field for developers developing more than one building, where the, it is possible by playing with the way you apply for building permits, to avoid DCCs in some multifamily developments and not in others.
Looking for a motion from... Move introduction? Second. Where's that? Alls in favor? Opposed? Motion carried?
Move second.
Second, second. Any comments, questions, discussion? Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? Move third?
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. CAO? Can we recess at this time, resume Committee of the Whole, and then come back to in camera?
Yes, Madam Chair, that would be the best, because they're members of the public that are in the audience, so I'd recommend that that's what...
Motion to recess, please.
Somebody disappeared.
So moved.
Seconder?
He's just stopped.
That'd be, that'd, Councilor Cullington, second, on the motion to recess. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carried? And...